Call meeting to order, please. Supervisor Collins, would you lead us in invocation?
Let us pray. Lord, tonight we pray for the lost souls in Oklahoma. Take those who died in your arms and those who survived, give them strength. We thank you for providing the brave teachers and first responders who place their own safety aside to protect others. We humbly ask you to guide this board in our decisions in the greater good for our citizens and for the county and for the government. Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand, face flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opposition to the agenda, Mr. Riley?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
For adoption, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to adopt by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Ewing, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer Tab F, which is the Transportation Committee report.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Collins, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments, Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two individuals, Dr. John Capehart, who's the chairman of the Board of Our Health.
If you come forward, please, give your name, magistrate or district, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, sir. Name is John Capehart, and I'm a citizen of the city Winchester, but I do own property in Frederick County.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. As Mr. Riley said, I'm chairman of the Isle Health Board, and wanted to make some remarks to you about your current budget. Mr. Schigl and board members, as well as Mr. Riley and staff, as I've stated, my name is John Capehart, and I'm chairman of the Isle Health Board. I'm currently serving in that capacity, been in about four years. I'd like to introduce, if you don't mind, Dr. Kendall, who's former chairman and chairman emeritus, as well as Sharon Gromling, who's our executive director here tonight, I think, to support me. I want to first thank the board and the administration of your past support of our health from its inception in 1999. I believe John Riley was on the original steering committee. They proposed the concept of our health. Frederick County Board of Supervisors has been a long supporter of our health, and we thank you for that, both your moral support as well as financial support. This support has gone a long way to enable us to grow and prosper as a nonprofit organization. The primary purpose of our health is to support partner agencies in our community, improve the health and well-being of our community by enhancing and fostering collaboration, improving outcomes of our member agencies. Currently, we have about 50. When we first started, there were six agencies on our campus. Now, we have 16. First year, we served about 5,000 people through those agencies. This past year, we served 30,000 people. So that's an impressive figure, and I think shows growth of the services we provide. We provide our member agencies, the 16 that are on our campus, with a safe, affordable, and attractive office space to meet client needs. Offer member agencies office space, our health subsidizes their rent, so they pay approximately 20% of we do, our health, towards the support of their location on our campus. Frederick County has generously supported us in this endeavor, and your general support has been about $21,000 a year. You also have an agency, the Social Services Department, that operates out of our campus. That does not, the money that you support in that regard does not go towards the operational budget, $21,000 that you currently provide us. As I'm sure you know, I guess that's my timeout. Okay. I'll keep this short. We also strongly affiliated with Valley Health, who's been a great supporter of us, and actually the original parent of our organization. We believe we provide invaluable service to the health and welfare of this community. We helped, as I mentioned, about 30,000 people last year through the agencies. The most powerful thing in the world is an idea, an idea of having local government, nonprofit social service agencies, health services, and medical organizations collaborate together to improve the delivery of health services is a very powerful idea, and it makes good business sense as well. We are soliciting your support to continue your financial contribution in the amount of $21,000. I know you've got a budget before you tonight. Without that support, we're going to have to cut ours. So thank you for your time, your patience, and your consideration.
Next, Mr. Riley.
Jay March. Good evening. I'm Jay March from the Gainesboro District, Chairman Schigl, members of the board, Administrator Riley. I was able to review the transportation plans on the agenda for this evening's meeting, and while all of us are paying higher property taxes in the county, we will soon be feeling the sting of the General Assembly Transportation Tax, one of the largest tax increases in Virginia history, pushed through in large part by Virginia County Delegate Beverly Sherwood. In the aggregate, very few of these dollars will make it back to our county. However, I do believe the Transportation Committee and the Planning Commission did good work in updating the Secondary Road Improvement Plan. I especially appreciate the objective criteria laid out in the road improvement system policy, and...
Mr. March?
Yes, sir.
If all of your comments are there, and that is a public hearing, they would be more appropriate then?
Well, Mr. Riley called me up, so I thought I'd better talk. I, you know, I didn't want to miss a chance. I kind of thought it would be more appropriate during the public hearing, but...
Other items?
No, no, it was just on the transportation. All right. If you don't mind a little repeat, I'll start over. Thanks, sir. All right.
Next, Mr. Riley.
That's it.
All right. Board of Supervisors' comments, are there any? If not, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, May the 8th, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, is submitted.
All right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, May the 8th, 2013, are approved. Committee appointments, Russell 150 Community Development Authority, we have an application from Scott Marsh. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, Mr. Scott Marsh is nominated to the Russell 150 Community Development Authority.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Scott Marsh is appointed to the Russell 150 Community Development Authority. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Gainesboro, are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, I tend to bring a nomination forward at the next Board of Supervisors meeting.
All right. Planning Commission, Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I've contacted several people with no luck. I do have two more I am in contact with, and I will have someone by next meeting.
Social Services Board, Gainesboro.
I do have a nominee whose name I will bring forward at the next Board of Supervisors meeting.
Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board, Mr. Riley, have we gotten a response?
We have nominations from the board themselves. We have nominated Mr. Bill Hoddle, who is currently completing his first term, Mrs. Rebecca Ebert, who is getting ready to complete her first term, and Mr. Savarice is going off due to his two terms, and it is recommended from the Tourism Board that Sharon Farrenholt replace Mr. Savarice. Ms. Farrenholt lives in Frederick County and owns a business Crown Trophy in Winchester.
We don't have a sheet on her, right?
We do not.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? This is a multi-jurisdictional appointment contingent on each jurisdiction's approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the nomination of Sharon Farrenholt to serve on the Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board.
Not the other two?
Oh, I'm sorry, and Ms. Rebecca Ebert and Bill Hoddle.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint Rebecca Ebert, Bill Hoddle, and, I'm sorry, the name again?
Sharon Farrenholt.
Sharon Farrenholt. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Supervisor De Haven.
Was it the intent of the agreement that we chime in on the other applicants? Mr. Savarice is the reason I'm asking?
Pardon me?
Were we expected to chime in on his recommendation? Mr. Savarice is, he's not a county resident.
He is not eligible for reappointments, I understand.
Okay, all right. I apologize. My fault.
Okay.
Nevermind.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The three individuals are appointed to the Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board. Shawnee Land Sanitary District, are we ready?
Yes, sir. I've contacted Ms. Schmidt. She has served ably on that committee, and she is willing to continue to serve, and so I would move to nominate Lynn Schmidt to be reappointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Lynn Schmidt is appointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Next is the Conservation Easement Authority. Mr. Riley, were we expecting to hear from the authority?
As far as...
Is this one of those where they make recommendations, or we pick people and put them there?
We put them there.
Has anybody contacted Mr. Marker or Mr. Lodge?
I have not.
Okay. Since it's August or September, maybe we better ask first.
All right.
Is that all right with the board?
Yes.
Frederick Winchester Service Authority, it's Frederick County representative. I did not speak to Mr. Cleland, I don't know if anyone else did or not. It would be an asset if he did want to reserve. Would you like, Mr. Chairman, send someone there? Okay. All right, next is a memo and resolutions in reference to the resignation of Opeken District Supervisor petition for special election. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is requested that the board authorize the county attorney to file a petition for writ of election to fill the vacancy in the office of the Opeken District Representative to the Board of Supervisors. We are, that resignation is effective May the 28th, and as the board knows, we have 15 days to petition the court, so it would be our request that the board authorize the resolution at this meeting.
All right, is there questions on the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, may I say I'm going to abstain from this?
Why?
I'm not sure.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if we don't approve his resolutions, does that mean Mr. Ewing can't move?
We need a legal opinion on that.
No, sir.
All right, if there are no questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. And please note Supervisor Ewing abstained. Next is the Human Resource Committee Report. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the committee met on Friday, May the 10th. We reviewed the harassment policy, the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, and the workplace violence policy. I might take note that we got excellent input from the citizen members of the committee, and we have included in your packet the changes that the committee is recommending to those three policies.
Questions? All right, was that a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. For those on the Personnel Committee where the harassment policy is, just let me find it here a minute.
We're against it.
The section where you report, I'm looking for it. I haven't figured out how to make marks on this iPad yet. Someone help me out. Wherever it is, it seems to say that you would file it with the supervisor or director of HR. Seems like "and" would be better than "or." It's an awfully minor change.
It's easy to incorporate.
Is that a procedure?
It's under the red.
Where is it? Let me get back here to where that red line is.
Page 47.
Have page numbers on them? Probably should remain as reading that it was... Director of HR, his or her supervisor, or the department head. I didn't think that's exactly the way it read, but if you would just check that out as a minor thing to look at. I won't suggest a change this evening because I'm not sure that's exactly where it is, but it seemed like it was an option, and it should be an "and" because it didn't really say what HR would do with it if they got it. And that may be it, but I should have made a few better notes. Anyone else have a discussion on the matter? All right, then we'll vote. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and the three policy change or amended policies are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, the committee discussed the creation of the EMS billing manager position within the Fire and Rescue Department after extensive discussion as far as moving the recommendation forward without a specific salary arrange. It was decided that this position, especially as it's initially created, when the new service is being put into effect, is going to require getting the right person in the job, and it was felt that the HR folks would like to move forward with advertising for the position to determine the full salary range it's going to take to get the proper qualification. With the idea, then, the specific salary range, we'll come back to the Board of Supervisors for final approval.
Mr. Riley, before we perfect a motion, we haven't created many new positions lately. We just eliminated them. HR is trying to bless the proceeding ahead with this. How would you like it to flow through?
I would like the position created so that we have the ability to advertise.
Will we do get funding from finance later?
Yes, because obviously that's tied to the revenue from revenue recovery, so it would probably be an advancement in anticipation of being reimbursed through those revenues.
Supervisor Hess, do we have a motion to create the position?
Yes, we do. I'd like to move that the county create the EMS billing manager position within the Fire and Rescue Department.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The position is created.
In addition, of course, the committee reviewed the committee's charter and is in the process of setting up a schedule to ensure ongoing review of the various sections of the personnel policy, and again, we had a very productive meeting. That's a matter of information only.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met on Wednesday, May the 15th, at 8:00 a.m. Items 1, 2, 4, and 6 were approved on a consent agenda, and I move that we approve these as a consent.
All right, we have a motion to approve items 1, 2, 4, and 6 under consent agenda, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Those items are approved under consent agenda.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $25,000 to cover overtime incurred through year end. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Foreign Rescue Chief requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $14,834.61. This amount represents revenues collected in excess of budget amounts and will be used for overtime expenses through year end. No local funds required. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Foreign Rescue Chief requests a change order to purchase order 21448 in the amount of $875 for additional tile work. Procurement policy states that a change order that exceeds the original purchase order by more than 10% must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, Supervisor Ewing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Foreign Rescue Chief requests a change order to purchase order 21448 in the amount of $875 for additional tile work. Procurement policy states that a change order that exceeds the original purchase order by more than 10% must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, Supervisor Ewing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, is that who was? Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
Outside agency contributions and park and rec co-sponsorship information are provided for continued discussion. The committee recommends FY 2014 elimination of the contribution to our health and a reduction of the community contribution to the Shenandoah Valley Discovery Museum to $5,000. Committee will review all non-discretionary outside agency contributions for potential adjustments to the FY 2015 contributions. Committee recommends approval of this, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? All right, hearing on, the motion dies for lack of a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor De Haven?
I'd move that we refer this back to committee to clarify the discussion such that all the outside, the discretionary outside agencies be granted the same treatment and the same opportunity to present their cases before decisions are made.
All right, we have a motion to refer back to committee, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion. Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, I hate to use cliches, but I will with this one. In my mind, we've kicked this can down the road many, many times, and I, I guess, have been the firebrand behind this to try to get some action on this because it was my understanding that we were finally going to take some action on this for this coming fiscal year, but now it looks like 2015? And as I said in the Finance Committee meeting, if we don't have the will to start doing something this coming fiscal year, we won't have the will to do anything in any coming fiscal year. And I think all these need to be reviewed. I personally, the committee wanted to have these outside agencies come in and do a personal presentation. I found the 50, the 78 pages that each agency submitted quite informative for me. If I had questions, I asked, and I came to my conclusions as to what I thought should be recommended based upon the information they provided. But I, for one, as I said, I don't want to see this can kicked down the road. I don't mind referring it back to the Finance Committee. They have all these agencies come in and be reviewed to make their presentation, but I would like to see that we do not disperse any funds to these outside agencies until that has been accomplished and we make recommendations that would be effective in the 2014 budget. So I would like to amend the motion to include that language.
All right, we have an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing, discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, when would the dispersments be made to these various organizations typically? I assume they're lump sum?
No, they're not lump sum. They're submitted on a quarterly basis, and the first dispersment normally goes out in August, if I'm not mistaken, of the new fiscal year.
So basically, the organizations are, would at best be getting a 90-day notice of a curtailment of funds?
Well, I think that if folks are available and schedules permit, we can move through this fairly quickly to allow these agencies to, if they choose to, to present to the Finance Committee, and we can probably have it resolved, I would think, no later than the August board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hess, did you have...
Because I just had further question. I know that there are a lot of worthy organizations on the list, and I'm sure that the time the original dispersments were made, the original pitch was made to the county, it was at a time when everyone agreed it was appropriate, but I think we've got to reexamine things in light of today's conditions, and I'm not necessarily opposed to making some cuts, and in some cases, dramatic cuts, but some of these organizations are doing really fine things within the community, and I think it perhaps behooves us to ensure that we have given them enough notice because it's going to be a significant impact on the budget to some of these organizations so that they could prepare for it, and that if we're going to curtail some of them, perhaps we can take action now, but the effective date of that perhaps might be sometime, a number of months out, where they can go through their budget cycle and prepare for it.
I think in some respects, though, if this motion amendment is passed, it is noticed that you may not get money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you look at the information submitted by the agencies, you'll generally find that our contribution to those agencies might amount to 2%, 4%, 6%. So I don't think that we're taking anybody's lifeline away here. I don't think any of these agencies are going to fold because if Frederick County decides to take all their funding away, it's not a significant amount to any agency that I have reviewed so far, but you might follow up on that and make sure, but like I say, with all the requests that we have here, I would think that if we were to cut your budget by 4%, if that means your agency is going to fall by the wayside, it wasn't a viable agency to begin with.
Good point.
Other discussion, and it would also be my interpretation that since the recommendation failed for lack of a second, that we're back to a board action earlier in the spring that they're on hold, Mr. Lofton's amendment certainly clarifies that issue, but I believe that was a previous position because the postponed to 2015 was a part of the motion that did not carry. If I can get you all on the same page as where I think we are, but it's good for clarification that it be outlined.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may add, that we sit and we talk about cutting agencies, but as I have said, and I think others have said, there may be agencies here, as Mr. House points out, that their agencies are viable and necessary to the community. There's no reason why they can't be increased as long as we don't go over that total that has been advertised and approved in the budget. So it's not like we're going to take a chop and ax to everybody.
So the amendment to the motion would be that we would not disperse funds to these discretionary agencies until a review and recommendation comes forward from the Finance Committee, which includes presentation by all. Is that clear? Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, perhaps one of the things that I would be personally interested in
I would like to know either specifically how our funds are used within their organization or what would be cut if we do not fund them or parts thereof. I'd just like, you know, if we could specifically know where those monies are being used.
Think we can handle that outside the motion, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
If you will let the folks know. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor.
Collins.
I don't want to belabor the point, but it disturbed me when I read this, when I received over the weekend, that we're eliminating all of the air health reduction. I recognize that that's not what we're voting on right now, but there was no commentary, there was no notes, there was nothing to indicate why the committee recommended we cut all of our health and why we were cutting the Channell Valley Museum so dramatically as well. And I was not able to attend the finance meeting, so I don't know what the rationale would be. And it concerns me that we're talking about these secondary, we're talking about these outside agencies that we're funding and not funding, but the lack of information and maybe I need to start, maybe I need to ask for it rather than expecting to see it in front of me when I'm voting on it. But that concerned me this evening.
We'll take that as a question asked now, whenever the recommendation comes. Other discussion? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the amendment is approved. Now we'll vote on the amended resolution, amended motion, excuse me. Supervisor Hess, well, any discussion first? Is it crystal clear? All right. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing. Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the amended motion passes. Go ahead Supervisor Ewing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county administrator provides 2011 Frederick County Foreign Rescue Squad Company audit findings and recommendations and request discussion recommendations. Committee recommends that each company submit a corrective action plan prior to the next scheduled donation dispersment in August 2013. That's information only, Mr. Chairman. Item 11, the county attorney presented information on the amendments to the spatial assessment role approved by the Russell 150 Community Development Authority. There were no actions by the board, but since that time, information has come up, and I'd like to put a motion on the floor at this time for consideration. I move that the Board of Supervisors accept the term sheet identified as Exhibit A of the Munich Cap Incorporated memorandum dated March 13, 2013, and authorize the county administrator to sign same on behalf of Frederick County.
All right, we have a motion, is her second? Second by Supervisor Lofton. For clarification, I believe it was provided at the committee, no action was taken because we failed to realize what was needed, so we're trying to fix it.
That's correct, sir.
It's not new information. Any other discussion? Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing. Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. All right, next is a public hearing, the draft update of the 2013 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plan and a joint public hearing with the Virginia Department of Transportation and Board of Supervisors for Frederick County for the purposes of comment on the proposed secondary road improvement plan for fiscal years 2014 through 2019. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, this is our annual update of the interstate primary and secondary road improvement plans for Frederick County, which we forward to VDOT. Now, you may have noted the differing language in your agenda and what is published in terms of the public hearing. The reason for that is the only actual required document by the state is the adoption of the secondary road plan. The interstate and primary road plans are documents that the county chooses to adopt in order to be not well apprised of our priorities here in Frederick County. So those are forwarded as informational items. However, for consistency and to giving, and to give people the utmost ability to be involved in comment, that's why we hold public hearings on all three. I'll start off with the interstate road improvement plan. Now, as you can imagine, with only one interstate in Frederick County, the plan has not changed drastically since last year. It's not changed at all as a matter of fact. Priority A continues, or the first priority continues to be the improvements at Exit 310, which of course we do have some funds, significant funds from the governor on now. However, we will maintain those on the plan, that on the plan until it reaches its ultimate. Just as a reminder, what has been funded to date only addresses Phase 1 of a future three-phase improvement to that interchange. Priority B does address the relocation of Exit 307 in the Stevens City area. VDOT does have study money on there that continues to move forward as well. And finally, C and D, with the C being in red and the D being in green, give priority to the different segments of widening of 81 within Frederick County, with the red being the higher priority and the green being the next highest. Moving on to the primary road improvement plan, once again, you do not have changes from last year's adoption. Route 37 continues and will remain until the board tells us differently, the number one priority in Frederick County, with the first, the highest priority phase being from Exit 310, which we just referenced in the interstate road improvement plan, over to Route 522. Second highest priority is on the northern end, where it loops around Stonewall Industrial Parks and travels from ID-1 down to Route 7. And of course, the middle section is the third priority of Route 37 itself. Other projects of note on the primary road improvement program are improvements to Route 11, 277, South Frederick Parkway, which would tie into a relocated Exit 307, which I noted in the interstate plan. All of those remain consistent from last year's adoption. And finally, I'll move on to the secondary road improvement plan. Now, I'll begin with the portion of the plan that probably commands the least money but the most attention, and that is the hard surfacing program. As you may be aware, we have roughly 90 miles of unpaved public roads in Frederick County. And this plan addresses those where citizens have requested, or over time it has made sense that frankly it's just needed, that that road be upgraded to a hard surface. This year, for the first time in several years, we were able to promote roadways from the unscheduled to the scheduled list. Now bear with me because I'm going to get into some interesting details that were different from previous times when we have done this. As you know, every time we actually have money, which we have not for some time, to promote roadways from the unscheduled to the scheduled list, we undergo a reranking, rescoring, if you will. We go out and look at the categories that we rate. Those include traffic count, whether a school bus travels on there, number of incidences of horizontal or vertical curvature, how wide the shoulders are, if there are shoulders at all, what the drainage is like, and so on and so on. And that document is included in your packet this evening for your reference. All those items together create a score which we use to rank the projects against each other to determine which are most worthy because even in a year like this, when we're able to promote a number of projects, there's never enough money to go around to all the needs. What happened this year was with the General Assembly action that actually created more funds for promoting of hard surfacing projects, there was a TRIP requirement placed on here. From a personal perspective, I rather resented that because I feel like we undergo a fairly exhaustive process compared to what most localities do. And I hated to have that baby thrown out with the bath by a blanket TRIP requirement when we look at so many other important things when we're considering which roads get promoted. However, we did not have the choice. So what you do have this year are projects that remain on the unscheduled list, which outscored some projects which were moved to the scheduled list. That said, there's no, there are no undeserving projects that were promoted. However, I thought it was important to note that we did have to differ from your adopted policy because of state code limitations on funds. The other thing I would point out, there were a number of roads that had previously been scheduled that as things were tightening up, had to be deprogrammed, if you will, moved from the scheduled to the unscheduled list. Direction we got from the board as that was happening would be that those projects would be the first to move back to the scheduled list, if for no other reason than fairness, since they had previously been given to expect that they would be paved, and now we're not. That still worked out with one exception. Ridings Mill Road was one of those projects, which we still have it at number one on the unscheduled list because it did not meet the TRIP requirement placed by the state. Otherwise, that would have been promoted along with the other projects you see before you being promoted for paving. Now, I'll go down through that list of projects that have been promoted for paving. They start at number two, that first segment of Woodside Road is the one that has remained on there. It's a bonded project by Titan Concrete, has been on there for some years. It was the one that was able to remain because it is, does, is projected to have a private source of funds. We were able to promote in this order Warm Springs Road, the rest of Woodside Road, Wright Road, Carter's Lane, Pack Horse Road, and Laurel Grove Road. As I noted earlier, those are all deserving projects, but some of them would not have made it on had it not been for the General Assembly action that overruled our scoring process. Now that said, we're very happy to be able to move those projects forward. We do remain with 21 projects on the unscheduled list. Everything from Ridings Mill Road all the way down to number 21, which is a fairly significant portion of Hunting Ridge Road. And that's where those stand right now. Finally, if I could backtrack a little bit, you do have a major road improvements page before you as part of the secondary plan. It's basically unchanged. There is a number of housekeeping items that need to take place with that plan that we would normally prefer to do at our annual adoption. However, as I noted earlier, this is a cooperative document with VDOT, and they simply were not ready for some of those movements of funds to take place. The more glaring one that I would point out is the remaining funds that stand on the road improvements to the intersection of White Oak Road and Tasker Road. That project's complete, there's a remaining balance. We would be looking to move those funds to one of the other projects on the list that's already in the plan that still needs further funds. However, VDOT was just not ready to make those at this time. So you'll probably see us in the next couple of months trying to do some of those housekeeping items. With that, I can take any questions you may have. As the chairman noted, this is a public hearing item. The Transportation Committee reviewed this on April 22 and recommended approval, and the Planning Commission reviewed it last week on 15th of May and also recommended approval.
Is VDOT, anyone, I don't see anyone from VDOT here.
No, I'm not expecting anyone from VDOT, sir.
Board questions on the Frederick, for staff of the Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plan or the proposed secondary road improvement plan for fiscal years 2014 through 2019 in Frederick County or the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2014 are the questions. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Bishop, when we say hard surface road improvements, are we talking about taking these roads from gravel to actual pavement?
Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead.
Does VDOT consider, or will they consider, an intermediate step, taking it from gravel, prime double seal, maybe to asphalt, which would seem to me stretch their dollars further, reduce their maintenance, and give the people in the county some semblance of a paved road? Because after a while, prime double seal will look like hardtop. And it would actually seem to me we could get more done with the dollars that VDOT has. Are they open to that suggestion, or has that been asked before?
To be honest, without getting really into the technical details, because I don't know them all, what I can say is what they already do is they have a rural rustic designation, which is what we already use for all of these projects. If you're asking for something between dirt and what we're doing for those, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if it's been considered or if it's allowable. But what we do now is the rural rustic compared to historically where we bump it out now to a 50-foot roadway. We basically do a paved and place, but I'm not sure how the specifics of what they do under the rural rustic program compares with what you're suggesting.
And to understand the rural rustic, it generally includes, like you say, right of ways that are not up to the standards that there are today. But even in roadways where the right of way is up to the standards that would be required today, I just wondered if, like I said, they were open to the suggestion of maybe an intermediate step to make the dollars go further, maybe Supervisor De Haven?
Supervisor De Haven might be a good, it sounds like rural rustic to me.
Getting into extreme technicalities, basically what you're asking is what rural rustic is.
Okay.
In very dire cases, are geometrics corrected in any way, drainage to a very minimal extent, and basically double priming. Now, there are probably details within the way they approach those things that I didn't recite for you, but basically it's what you're suggesting. And that's the approach we've been using now for a long time.
Are there, is there a funding stream available for that rural rustic?
You're looking, it's the same stream of funds. Now, there are other issues out there. For instance, you can do like a revenue sharing type of application with these. That's allowable under state code. We've yet to find a community on a dirt road that's been quite up to that step, once that comes up. But this is, as Mr. De Haven says, this is the source of funds we use for this. It's not a separate pot of money.
And I'm sure I'm not the only person that gets calls from constituents wondering why something can't be done on a short section of road that would take a minimal amount of money to pave that road. And yet I see here, one of the roads, it's like three to one, the roads that we're going to do as opposed to the roads you're not going to do, and some of those aren't even, I have some that aren't even on the list yet. So.
I think you're right.
Prospects are not good, but we can offer them any relief anytime in the near future. And I realize that's not your fault.
No, I understand.
Hopefully, VDOT will be able to come up with a better funding stream to address some of these because it does, in my mind, it does hurt development, economic development, because if people, where they buy a house might be determined by whether or not that road is paved.
Yes, sir. Another factor that comes up many times in those calls, and of course I get them too, is that what we spend or all the extra effort that does get spent on a dirt or gravel road versus what it would cost to do a rural rustic treatment. It's awful close, but we're also handcuffed in that regard because of the rather strict demarcation between maintenance versus construction funds.
I saw your finger go up Supervisor De Haven, did the moment pass?
No, we've used the rural rustic approach ever since the opportunity presented itself from VDOT, as being the way to get the most bang for the buck.
Other questions on the road plans?
Chairman.
Supervisor Hess?
Yes, Mr. Bishop, of course you are right, it's probably the most common inquiry I get from constituents is, when's my road going to get paved? Couple of questions. Number one, I noticed you don't include the ratings on the scheduled list. Is any reason?
No particular reason, we never have. I did include the table that has the ratings on it as part of your packet this evening.
Okay. And then that Ridings Mill Road on the unscheduled list, I notice you don't have the rating there. I know it's out of order anyhow, but.
That's why we didn't really put the effort in on a Ridings Mill Road this time because we had previous direction from the board that it would be promoted first. It wouldn't be difficult for me to do that. Just so everybody knows exactly where it currently stands, I was simply operating under past direction.
Okay. And a couple of things that you and I have already talked about, and I think we both understood it was be corrected, but it certainly was not corrected in my packet. The Warm Springs Road is in the Gainesboro District and not in the Stonewall. And then on the unscheduled list, Hollow Road, I believe that is now currently all in the Gainesboro District following the redistricting of the Magisterial Districts. I might also point out that the Gainesboro District, I suspect, along with Back Creek, probably contains the majority of unpaved roads in the county. And of the seven items listed on the scheduled list totaling nine, just over nine miles, 9.07, two of those roads totaling 2.23 miles are from the Gainesboro District. Then over on the unscheduled list, out of 21 items totaling. Then over on the unscheduled list, out of 21 items totaling just over 24 miles, 11 of those are in the Gainesboro District for a total of 15.15 miles. I did also want to pass on the comments of a constituent, actually two of them, and specifically in regard to Hollow Road. Apparently, VDOT comes out there at least once a year, in some cases twice a year, grades the road, cleans out the ditches and culverts, and spreads gravel. It's generally as a result of a storm. And their point was that they understand that we go through an objective process here, but they feel that so much money has been spent regrading, re-cleaning out those culverts that that road probably could have been repaved three times over in the last 10 years. And I just think it's something we need to make sure we emphasize with VDOT. In a sense, it would reduce the outlay on maintenance if they did that rustic road provision, which I confirmed with them today, and I believe they're talking about essentially three layers of tar and chip to go through the rustic road provision. Let's see. I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
And I apologize about the correction of the districts. I thought I had done it. Obviously, it didn't come through in this copy, and it will definitely be taken care of.
Supervisor, you?
Mr. Bishop, clarify for me one more time.
Yes, sir.
These changes were made strictly because of VDOT changing prioritizing and using strictly the average daily traffic count per road?
Yes, sir.
No consideration?
Hold on, let me back up one second. We still reranked all the roads. However, there were some that would have been promoted that we had to skip because they did not meet that 200-trip threshold that was put in place by the General Assembly.
The General Assembly did it?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding from VDOT staff, yes.
There's no consideration there for danger, skurves, hills, school buses, like we have set up?
No, sir. I wasn't too tickled about it, to say the least.
I'm very disturbed, because we have Ridings Mill Road. Half of it's finished. The most dangerous part of the road has not been finished, and its top of the list was next to be done. And here it is pushed down, six others put in front of it, because the General Assembly sitting in Richmond comes up with a criteria that they think is better than Frederick County's criteria, which takes into consideration other than average daily trips. I think we need to contact our representatives, have them review that and...
I do not disagree with that.
Anyway, thank you.
Other questions to staff? Supervisor Hess?
One other point I just wanted to make is that list of seven scheduled ones, according to that way I read that the advertisement date means that the last two aren't going to be done for some eight or nine years.
It's odd that they put them in a six-year projection and then put in advertisement that that's far out, that's that far out, but we have, as Frederick County, that is, we have no say in what VDOT expects the advertisement date to be.
I understand.
The discussion has prompted a query in me that I must admit I didn't look for when I reviewed this, so it may be abundantly clear or not. What do we maintain as far as right-of-way acquisition status of these kinds of roads? Do we maintain anything?
If you permit me, there was a time where every one of these projects included a significant right-of-way acquisition process, because when you would do one, to even get on the list, you had to have the agreement of all the neighboring property owners along the segment, that they would give up whatever right-of-way was needed when VDOT came to do the road. And so it was a fairly onerous process. With the inception of the rural rustic, which is much more of a paved and place, that concern, that requirement, really went away for us, because in order to do the most projects, get the most bang for the buck, as Mr. DeHaven mentioned earlier, we do them all as rural rustic program roads.
Question here. I know when properties transferred under current code, the right-of-way comes in the buying and selling. So long-term property owners are the ones that sometimes the right-of-way has not been provided. You're saying that we do maintain a database of that? Was it in here, or?
It's not as part of, most of those are what's called prescriptive right-of-way, and VDOT maintains that. We don't really have a dog in that fight, if you will.
Because I think there are some roads that we've talked about over time that if they were at the top of the list, we don't have the right-of-way for. And there were reluctant people. Not everybody agrees. And so I was just curious as to what we knew about that status, not saying you should or you shouldn't. I just wanted to know what we did know.
Well, in those projects now, since we would do them under the rural rustic program, we would not have that same concern regarding right-of-way.
But that means it's rural rustic and not traditional paving?
Correct.
So we don't maintain anything?
No, sir.
Other questions to staff?
More comment than anything else in my discussions with VDOT today. They indicated that parameters for rural rustic roads regarding trip count was a minimum of 200, he thought, although he wasn't positive of that, and a peak of 1,500. Pretty broad range.
Yeah, they get over 1,500, and they're wanting a lot more significant than what we're typically dealing with on this list.
I was trying to follow, did the new trip count apply to rural rustic?
That's my understanding, because previously it was not a concern for us. We've...
Give you something and take it away?
Basically.
Yep.
Other questions to staff? All right, then we'll go to public hearing. This is a public hearing on a draft update of the 2013-2014 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans. The primary interstate road improvement plans establish priorities for improvements to the primary and interstate road networks within Frederick County. Comments from the Transportation Committee will be forwarded to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, the priorities adopted by the Board of Supervisors will be forwarded to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for consideration. The Virginia Department of Transportation and the Board of Supervisors for the county of Frederick, Virginia, in accordance with Section 33.1-70.01 of the Code of Virginia, are also conducting a joint public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary road improvement plan for fiscal years 2014 through 2019 in Frederick County and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2014. Copies of the proposed plan and budget may be reviewed at the Edinburgh Office of the Virginia Department of Transportation located at 14031 Old Valley Pike, Edinburgh, Virginia, or at the Frederick County offices located at 107 North Ken Street. All projects in the secondary road improvement plan that are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, the STIP, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation dollars. Persons require special assistance, that's not necessary here this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the 2013-2014 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plan, the proposed secondary road improvement plan for fiscal years 2014 through 2019 in Frederick County, or the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2014? If so, would you come forward, give your name, Magisterial District, limit your comments to three minutes, please? Mr. March, I appreciate your cooperation in helping us.
Well, absolutely. Jay March from the Gainesboro District, and it worked out very well. Thank you very much, Deputy Director Bishop, for the comments on the plan tonight. I was able to review the transportation plans on the agenda for this evening's meeting. While all of us are still paying higher property taxes in the county, we will very soon be feeling the sting of the General Assembly transportation tax, one of the largest tax increases in Virginia history, pushed through in large part by Frederick County delegate Beverly Sherwood. In the aggregate, very few of these dollars will make it back to our county. However, I do believe our Transportation Committee and Planning Commission did a good job in updating the secondary road improvement plan. I especially appreciate the objective criteria laid out in the road improvement rating system policy and your adherence to this, regardless of VDOT's interference. My initial concern was how public safety considerations are incorporated into the planning. I was glad to see that the category of accidents was listed into this criteria. We all drive by small crosses on the road every day. Our transportation planning process should always strive to reduce them. While there have been no deaths in my immediate neighborhood, my immediate neighborhood secondary roads, we have had several accidents on Warm Springs Roads, so I was glad to see this one on the list. But I wonder if it's paved, if more folks won't just drive faster. Who knows? I also see that school bus travel is a criteria. This is another important aspect in planning, and I thank the committee for including it. I appreciate the work that went into this update, and especially how quickly it was accomplished after the transportation bill being signed just last week. Thanks to Supervisor DeHaven for running a good transportation committee, and Supervisor Hess for looking out for our roads in the Gainesboro District, and again, Deputy Director Bishop for doing a good job on this, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I have a motion for approval of the updates.
All right, we have a motion to approve the updates. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go back and say one more time that I think we need to contact our representatives and get them to review and give consideration to what their formula is for establishing these criterias, and I think they should consider the county's guidelines for establishing the criterias.
Supervisor DeHaven, do you have some more thoughts?
Well, I do, but I think it's safe to say because there are a lot of more rural localities in the Commonwealth whose roads, unimproved roads, would virtually never meet the 200 number. I think that the legislature is hearing this message, and if someone desires to take a more formal approach, we could certainly deal with that.
Well, depending on her sentiments, I was contemplating a referral to Transportation to see about a letter. I don't even know who made the decision. Was it legislative or based on VDOT recommendation? Or sometimes these things are hard to figure out.
I believe that the legislature took the action.
And if there was enough sentiment, it would be appropriate to come out of committee with a draft of a please look at this again, but I'm not, I need to know who feels what way.
I think that message is clear across the Commonwealth. This is creating quite a stir for quite a lot of jurisdictions. We'd be happy to address the issue anyway that the board would prefer.
Would it hurt us putting our two cents worth in also, though?
I can't see what it could hurt.
Hurt for us to put our two cents worth in also?
Well, I'm just thinking, we can't craft it tonight.
No, no, no. I'm talking about let's stay up for committee.
Riley, do you have a better, what does the board feel first?
I would agree. It clearly affects the citizens of the county. As was pointed out, maybe other counties are affected even more, but certainly our citizens are affected.
I think staff gets the gist of your concern, and if you feel inappropriate, we can draft a letter for the chairman's signature to send to our delegation.
All right, what?
I put that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Let's dispose of our motion on the floor, and then perhaps we can go there.
Okay.
Other discussion on the motion in a second. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Now, what would somebody like to do?
I would like to put a motion on the floor that county administrator drafts a letter for your signature to the delegates and state senator.
Help me out a little bit. Is it a do away with this or reconsider it? Or what do you want him to say?
Reconsider, revisit and reconsider.
All right, everybody understand the motion? It's a letter to appropriate parties, signed by me, that asks for a reconsideration of this. Is there a second?
Is there just, oh, sorry.
No, if you need clarification.
Yeah, was it just in regard to the trip count, the letter?
Their formula for establishing their priorities.
The form is ours. The trip count is state.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And that's all the letter is going to address? Or is it going to ask perhaps for some consideration on the county's rating plan?
That's ours. We could change any time.
I know.
No, but I'm...
I think what you have to focus on is their action and them being either unaware or not familiar with their action and how it usurped our plan.
Gotcha.
It might even be possible to slide one of those things through legislature that unless you have a well-thought-out documented plan, I mean, that might be... But that's the only decision they made. It kind of messed us up. Now, that doesn't mean that we were perfect in our plan, but it's sure been tweaked a lot over the years.
Yeah, well, I will tell you, I think the plan looks good, and the citizens that I've talked to that have had complaints, when they've seen what the rating system is, they're obviously still not happy that their road's not going to get paved anytime soon, but at least they understand there's a reasonable process, and it's really helped calm the emotions of a lot of folks.
The other discussion. All right, I'm going to take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to send the letter, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Riley, I'll wait to see what it looks like.
Yes, sir.
Board liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I'm going to assume this is the right town to put this in motion. The, Mr. Supervisor Ewing and I have been working with a group from Middletown to discuss a potential boundary line adjustment, and it seems like we've been doing that for some time now. But I think it has drug on because of resignations and appointments and resignations and elections and resignations. So we don't feel that it's being productive at this point, and we would like to see that Middletown, through the next appointment, the next election, or whatever that may be, that the town council is unified in its, I guess, desire to continue with that boundary line adjustment. And since Mr. Ewing is resigned from the board, I would like to move that the board accept a recommendation from Supervisor Ewing and I that we cease negotiations with the town of Middletown until such future time that the board determines such negotiations might be appropriate and productive.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, to get it on the floor.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I wonder, I wonder if it wouldn't be more clear if you included something that you received a request that is not currently supported, to tell them what to do if they ever want to reengage.
Well, the information they provided us seems to come and go. So what I would like to see is, again, I'd like to see the town council get unified, give direction.
But is there an outstanding request on their behalf that we possibly question the unified support for, or is it just some people's hawking? I mean, I guess I'm hearing what you're saying, it sounds good, but I'm thinking, what's the instructions we give to Middletown? Give us a written request that has the support of council, so we know what it is and who wants to talk about it. Some instructions...
I think a resolution...
I don't want to talk to you anymore.
I think a resolution from town council that the town council is, I won't say it has to be unanimous, but the town council does strongly recommend that those negotiations continue and give some benefits why that should be continued, and that asked the county to come back into negotiations with them, because quite honestly, the players come and go, and that's just a function of life sometimes, but...
Let me, we have a motion in a second, but let me try something else on you.
Okay.
What if you and Mr. Ewing were to resign, for lack of a better word, for your request to the board to meet with them and work out details, and we ask Middletown to send us a new request in whom they would like to meet with that we can deal with, and then we can adjudicate the matters you talked about as far as, does it have broad support? Is it likely to change? Or just trying to tell folks, other than I want, that's not a clear enough message, I don't think, unless you perfect your motion a little bit.
Okay.
I have to that. I think the request needs to come back to the full board to see if there's still interest to pursue it.
Something like that, to start a, to start a level playing field about what we're even talking about, I don't know anymore.
Okay. So would you like to frame that motion for me?
If you and Mr. Ewing, I think we ask you to meet with them.
Yes.
If you resign from that position and ask Mr. Riley to send them a request to tell us what they'd like to talk about and who they'd like to talk about, that the entire board can debate.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Riley, are we getting there?
Got it.
Well... Well, comment before we get a second and go too far. I assume the first motion and second were withdrawn?
I would throw the first motion.
Am I putting you in a bad spot, Mr. Riley?
Not at all.
Okay, it makes sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we had a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
A discussion, folks?
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I may, certainly I don't want this to fall badly upon those that we've negotiated with in Middletown. I do believe they've come to the negotiating table with their best faith effort, but it just, like I say, the players come, the players go, and we're not sure exactly who has the support of the council to be there negotiating, and I don't feel comfortable, I won't speak for Supervisor Ewing. So we'd kind of like to maybe start this process again with, like you say, some broad support shown from them to us that we should begin this again.
I dare say the rest of the boards, like me, we don't know as much as you and Supervisor Ewing know.
You might. No, I think Mr. Lofton's right. I think they need to come back to us with a resolution or some documentation to the full board for consideration, and then you all decide whether we want to go back into negotiations with them on their request.
Yes.
Other discussion?
Yes.
Any of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Citizen comments, this is the portion of the meeting the board sets aside for citizens to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone here who would like to do so? If so, please come forward, give your name, magistrate district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Schickel and Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Gardner. I live at 2103 Bruce Town Road, Clearbrook, Virginia, and I am in the Stonewall District with Mr. De Haven. I have a list of emails here that since August 3 of 2012, I have been contacting John Chanery and Mark Machirin, I may be saying the name wrong, Donna Colbank, Doug Daly. This concerns a property next to me. It's a garage, okay, that's off to the side of a rental house. I've had a gentleman living in that garage since this time. I've got to deal with his pile of trash, I've got to deal with his friends coming over, their kids urinating in the yard, I've had to deal with death threats in front of deputies, I've had to deal with burn threats, felonies that are coming up in court as well, too. I've pretty much exhausted my way out of what should I do? What can I do? To the point where now John Chanery will literally blow me off, and they think it's only their position that during working hours do they go by and see if the guy's there. First off, I'm a quality manager for my company. I'm salary. I'm 24/7, okay? And I'm, consider anybody on this board as well, your salary, whoever the case may be, you're 24/7 as well, too. You know, I've got this, you know, I've got to look at trash that has been there since August of 2012, still sitting on this property as well. I've got to deal with a gentleman that's living in the garage with no running water, no heat, no nothing like that. The only excuse I get from the landlord, or John Chanery gets from landlord, is from Jim Nichols Construction Company, he owns the house now, is that this guy does projects for him at night, okay? It's BS, okay? I have pictures from August every single day, and I've emailed you, I've emailed Chuck, I've emailed everybody, okay? And I've detailed every single time, and it's in the photographs as well. Like I said, I'm completely exhausted as to what to do. I don't see how this guy is allowed to live there. At this point in time right now, he has three vehicles sitting there, the county police have finally called up to him because his plates are expired, whether he can't drive or whatever the case may be. He doesn't go anywhere, okay? He doesn't live anywhere else. He is there 24/7, okay? I've got to deal with all his traffic, his friends that are coming in and out of there all the time for 10, 15 minutes at a time, the little secret handouts, the making sure nobody's looking when they hand something to somebody. I don't think I need to go into detail with anybody here, what's going on there, and all that stuff. And I will be talking to Commonwealth Spicer this following next Wednesday as well, developing with this. You know, I hand-built my house myself personally. I'm not a contractor, I'm not a builder. I took an old house from 1820, and I made it into our family home. That was a deserted old property, and I've spent the last eight years busting my ass in, excuse my French, to make myself to have a nice home, to take care of my property and everything else. And now alls I got to do is every time I go out and look on my porch, I've got to see this man's trash, I got to see all his traffic going in and out of there, and it's not permitted for somebody to live in the garage, okay? It's disheartening to us, after all the work and effort we've put into our property. I believe if I ever have to go to sell it, I got to sit here and have piles of trash there. I'm exhausted, and I need somebody on this board to please look into this, to please help us.
Well, the board will have Mr. Riley give a staff report to Ed, email it, mail it to us on this situation, not knowing what he'll find out. We'll also examine what our capabilities are and our abilities to react to it, and then we will get back to you. And please check my email address because this does not register with me at all, so.
I can show you. I can, actually, I can give these copies to whoever you want right now.
It doesn't ring a bell at all. So if you send it to me, something's wrong.
Yeah.
But anyway, we, the board will receive individually from staff, Mr. Riley, what he finds out about this situation, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, like I said, I'm begging somebody, please. I mean, it's, it's, it's so hard for us to go outside of our house, to have to look at this every single day, and to watch the drug dealings, to watch the children urinate in the yard and everything else, you know? And I have to take pictures because I've had stuff recently stolen, every single day.
We heard you.
You know?
Okay.
And if you'd like, like I said, I have the whole copy from August.
Well, after the meeting, let me see the email addresses.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, and also thank you for all, for addressing the situation in Oklahoma as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening, Chairman Schickel. My name's Bill Dodson, I am from the Opeckin District. I'm here tonight to thank Mr. Ewing for being a fine supervisor for the Opeckin District all these years. When I became interested in county politics, I lived in the Shawnee District, and my supervisor at the time was Harrington Smith. With Harrington's passing, we got Mr. Fisher appointed to this board. I since moved to my hometown of Stevens City, and I got to know Mr. Ewing, not only as a supervisor, but as a friend. And I'm here tonight to just thank him for doing an excellent job all these years. My father grew up with Bill, and when I moved back into town, he said, "Son, please don't write any of those nasty letters to the Winchester Star about Mr. Schickel, about Mr. Ewing." I said, "Well, why?" He said, "Well, he's a pretty good man." And I took the time to get to know Mr. Ewing, and I have debated him on many issues facing this county and this state. And the one thing I have found out, I've taken away from those debates, is you don't have to be disagreeable to disagree. We debated these issues with the utmost respect for one another's positions, and I'd like to thank Mr. Ewing for being our supervisor for all these years. He has looked at the issues through the eyes of his constituents and not through the eyes of those who wish to benefit financially from those issues. Mr. Ewing, you are a fine man. You enjoy your retirement, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors' comments. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I, too, would like to thank Supervisor Ewing for his service to the board, to the citizens of this county. And Mr. Ewing and I have known each other for many years, prior to even the board, and I will say that his conduct, his demeanor, his execution of the duties in this office are what I have come to know and expect of Mr. Ewing. I don't think the citizens of Opeckin District could have been served better by anyone than him, and I know that Opeckin's loss will be Gainesboro's gain. So thank you, Supervisor Ewing, for everything and for your mentoring me. I've called Mr. Ewing on several occasions and asked his advice because I knew that his sage advice would help me reach a decision, and it has. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Anyone else?
We're going to go down the table, Mr. Chairman.
Y'all are going to make me feel bad.
I'll try to be brief, but it's been an absolute honor and a privilege to serve Supervisor Ewing, and I've learned a great deal, and it's been truly rewarding for me to have served with him in various capacities, and I think the citizens have been well-served, and I think the board has been well-served by his presence here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I did tell what everybody said, but Bill has, we've met together with individual citizens and homeowner associations, we've worked together, and one of the interesting things with Bill, it didn't really make any difference if it was in his district. We had, something was close, we kind of got together and worked on it, and, but I do have one question. Are you going to appoint somebody before you leave to make the motion to adjourn?
We need to, or you'll never go home.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I, same sentiments. Mr. Ewing has had that, being the newest of the board, it was, it was very good to have his rudder to show me the way on a few occasions, to lead me not astray. So I'm going to miss Mr. Ewing, and I'm going to miss all of his expertise and experience, especially on the finance committee, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
As the junior member of the board and having only been appointed some three months ago, I came in, as everyone knows, in the middle of the year and didn't have the opportunity to go through an orientation that I think some of you have gone through when you were first elected to the board. And it's really been impressive to me to watch the way Bill has handled himself on the board and the example he has certainly set for me, especially since I had so much to learn. I've appreciated his attention to the details and his willingness to examine all sides of an issue, and it's been a real help to me, and I think it ultimately will, the citizens of the Gainesboro District will be well-served by the mentoring I've received from Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions for you. Is there any chance that when Mr. Dodson start, didn't write letters about you, that I got them all?
I told him to send them to your address.
Now that you're resigning from the board, does that mean I don't have to fulfill all those promises you made to those homeowners when we were walking door to door, and you said I'd be back to do their yard work?
Mr. Chairman?
Does that mean I don't have to do that?
No, no, you're not excused from that. I had a call tonight from a couple of them, and they said just because you're going off the board doesn't mean that your chairman doesn't still have to come and fulfill his promises of doing their yard work for him, so they're still looking for.
That was his method of campaigning, I want everybody to know. I asked Bill, when he took over finance, to provide leadership, build consensus, establish vision and direction, and he did. And I sincerely appreciate his taking that task and taking it on the way he did. And about the only other thing I can think of tonight is, I won't lose a friend, but I'll lose a friend on the board, and I certainly appreciated it, Bill, and my best wishes to you.
Thank you.
And your future endeavors.
Let me see if I can. See if I can say a few words here without breaking up. I had really planned about a 20 or 30-page dissertation to read tonight, but with all these comments, I'm afraid to do so. I'm afraid you'll take them back, and I appreciated, appreciated every comment that I heard. And to have a county Democrat come in and thank me for my service means a lot, Bill. But.
I expect lunch tomorrow for this.
Yeah. John, you and your staff, I want to thank for all the work and help that you've given us. You've carried us through some budget sessions that I didn't think was possible, but you pulled us through, and I certainly do appreciate your support of me and helping me.
Thank you.
Get through. Gary, Chuck, Bob, Chris, Gene, and Dicky.
I was wondering.
I appreciate all of your all's support and confidence in my dealing here on the board, and while I'll be on the other side, I won't be leaving you. I'll be still working with you in any way possible that I can help, Mr. Chairman, I'm available to do so, except mowing those grass, those yards, and digging those flower beds. I also want to thank the citizens of the Opeckin District, their loyal support and confidence that they showed towards me, voting me into office, what, three times? And of course, I better not leave without saying thanks to my wife. She's put up with a lot the last nine and a half years, and, but I do want to leave this board with one challenge, one that's dear to my heart. If you find that the PPA, how you pronounce, what is that? PPA?
PPEA.
PPEA. If you find that financially feasible, I would challenge you to carry through with it and move the county office buildings to the county. That's my request to you all. If you want to give me a good going-away present, provide that to me. Other than that, thanks to everyone. It's been a good ride, and I appreciate all, everything.
Bill, when do I expect the first complaint from you as a resident of the Gainesboro District?
May the 29th, 12:01.
Supervisor Hess, you do have some open committee comments, don't you?
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question, probably since the HR director's not here, maybe Mr. Riley can answer this, but I wondered if Supervisor Ewing's retirement included therapy sessions for Jeanette when Mr. Ewing starts staying home full-time? There seems there ought to be a benefit to make that transition for her.
There is a special place at Orchard Ridge for that.
This week.
You're not to be denied tonight, but I'll wait till you're finished.
I'm finished. I'm finished.
What are you waiting for, then?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I move adjourned.
Adjourned, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.